Monday, July 27, 2020. It's 5:39 PM. We're starting a little late. I apologize. We're meeting via Zoom this evening and also being broadcast on Channel 99. You can livestream at Nashua ETV's website. We're holding this meeting virtually pursuant to Executive Order 202004, Section 8, and Emergency Order Number 12, Section 3. Mr. Guarino, could you please call the roll?
Okay. Mr. Guarino is here. Mrs. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Zeeem?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here, but I can't hear her.
Hi. Here?
Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Odin?
Here.
Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Okay, also with us, we have Dr. Mosley.
Here.
Ms. O'Gara?
Yeah.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Ms. Bagley?
Here.
Ms. Kinsella? Here. We have Mr. Norris. Mr. Gao? Is this Mr. Gao? Yep. And also others with us tonight are Mr. Forrest and Ms. Amen Teros and Mr. Larnie. Did I miss anyone? Mr. Schmidt, I'm sorry. I think that's everyone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Guarino. I welcome everybody. This evening, we're having a special Board of Education meeting to talk about mostly personnel issues. And so on that note, I will hand it over to either Dr. Mosley or Ms. O'Gara or Ms. Timmons. I'm not sure which one of you wanted to speak on this.
Okay, you do Timothy and I can do Mr. Schmidt.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Who's doing? Yeah.
So.
Can everyone hear me?
I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Okay, so. Well, I'll just do both of them. Doesn't matter. First of all, this is probably the most difficult part of the job. Very strong candidates for both positions of Assistant Principal. One of them is at Broad Street with John Forrest, who was the Assistant Principal. Now he's the Principal. And the other position was at the Assistant Principalship over at the North High School. So Timothy comes to, he's a, you know, one of the things that I remember most about Timothy was his green shirt that he wore at Sunset Heights during Christmas festivities. And he comes to us with elementary school experience. He certainly brings a lot of talents and knowledge around curriculum and instruction, but also about kids as well. He was one of three top, top candidates. And as you'll start to interview him more, you'll see that, you know, he's going to be a fine addition with Mr. Forrest. And we couldn't be more happier to have him a part of our leadership team. There's one drawback about this candidacy. Unfortunately, Tim is going to be leaving Sunset Heights, where he's been a family member there for quite some time, but he's still in the district. But, you know, we're happy to welcome him as an Assistant Principal at Broad Street. So without further ado, you have his resume in front of you. Please feel free to ask him anything you'd like.
Okay. Welcome, Mr. Larnie, and welcome to your new role. That's very exciting.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Does anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Larnie? Anybody? No? Okay.
Oh.
That's great. Oh, there's Ms. Timmons.
Yeah, well, since no one has any questions, and I'd like to nominate Timothy Larnie for Assistant Principal of Broad Street Elementary School for the 2021 school year at an annual salary of $73,500. I need a second.
A second.
I need a roll call. Second by Ms. Gilio.
Thank you, Ms. Timmons. When you are ready, Mr. Guarino.
On the motion, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson? Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Zeeem?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
That was easy. That was easy.
Yeah, it was real easy.
It never goes that way.
Thanks to all.
Thank you, and welcome to your new role.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
For your support.
All right, this, Peter Schmidt. We're going to move to Peter Schmidt.
Welcome, Peter. Congratulations.
Hi there. Good evening, everyone. Hello again, yes.
Yes.
Thanks for having me here this evening.
No problem. Can you tell us something about yourself? So the other board can, I'm sorry, Dr. Mosley, I cut you off.
I'm sorry, Ms. Timmons. He's going to do that.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I apologize.
I'm going to give an introduction because this hasn't been done at the board level before. But we certainly want to make sure that we communicate to a wide audience of people that are out there. So Tim and Yanni spoke, we spoke yesterday, I'm sorry, spoke on Friday about how we were going to present Tim to the community and what it's about in terms of who we are and what we represent. Again, there are three top, top candidates for this position. I've asked Yanni to be here because she'll serve as the interpreter. But there's some questions, and he's going to answer that question for you. But I think it's important that, that Tim and the district and the community, we recognize that communication is paramount, but also doing it in different ways that we hear the parents that tell us, you know, it's nice to understand some of the things that happen at the board level, but yet it's just in one language. So tonight, we're going to do something a little different. So Tim, you know what you're going to do. Yanni, you know what you're going to do. Bear with us. Could you please ask your question, Gloria?
No, go right ahead, Dr.
No, I'll ask you a question.
I asked him a lot of questions already.
So I'm sorry, just for clarity, you were asking the board to ask our questions of Mr. Larnie? So that, or Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Schmidt.
Oh, Mr. Schmidt, okay. Sorry, I thought you said Tim, and I got very confused for a moment.
I might have said Tim. I apologize.
Okay, so welcome, Mr. Schmidt. Do any of the board members have questions for Mr. Schmidt? Okay, it looks like Ms. Zeeem has a question for Mr. Schmidt.
Well, I just would repeat what Mrs. Timmons, she had asked if you would tell us a little bit about yourself and how you come to be the great educator you are.
Oh, okay. I'll say esto en español, la recomendación del director superintendent, your Mosley. Entonces, mi nombre es Peter Schmidt. Yo soy de Manchester, New Hampshire. Yo era profesor por muchos años, diecisiete años en total. Diecisiete años en Pinkerton Academy como profesor de español y también como coordinador de los estudios globales. Yanni, quieres traducir or interpretar?
Yes, let's speak. So Pete is just doing this upon Mr. Mosley's recommendation. And he worked at Pinkerton Academy for more than 17 years, and he's really excited to be part of the team.
Sí, el año pasado yo serví como director asistente en Franklin High School. Y ahora yo soy muy emocionado de ser el asistente director de Nashua North.
Last year, he was Assistant Principal, and this year, he's really excited to be considered, you know, in the position of Assistant Principal for High School North.
Sí, y la verdad es que yo era profesor o como instructor, educador de todo mi vida, desde la edad de quince años como instructor de natación, como instructor de navegación, también como consejero de campamento y también como instructor de esquí. Entonces, yo tengo la enseñanza, mi sangre y mi alma, y por eso estoy aquí.
So, Mr. Schmidt has been an instructor for many years. He's been a swimming instructor, even a camp counselor. So he's got education in his blood, and that's why he's here. He can make a difference.
Can you tell us a little bit about how you will connect with our Spanish-speaking population, particularly our ELL students?
Claro. Tengo que el idioma es una manera para conectar con todos los estudiantes. En este caso especialmente los latinos los que hablan español. Esta conexión es tan importante para tener el éxito de los estudiantes. Y para mí, yo voy a hacer todo lo que yo puedo hacer para conectar con estos estudiantes que no hablan inglés, porque yo soy, well, yo soy aprendedor de idioma. Y yo era un estudiante de idioma. Entonces, yo puedo entender cómo es, cómo aprender un idioma nueva.
Now, Mr. Schmidt relates to how important it is to speak Spanish. And he understands that it's a way to connect with students, you know, in this case especially Latinos and Hispanic-speaking population. And he speaks Spanish. He's actually a learner of Spanish language right now. So he understands how important it is to communicate in that native language.
Y para mí, yo quiero ser una persona, consejero, alguien para estos estudiantes que necesitan ayuda y apoyo en su idioma de español.
He would also like to serve, you know, as a coach, as a counselor, as a support to these students, you know, as a bridge that they don't speak the language.
Porque la meta al final es que yo quiero el éxito de cada estudiante. Y a mí no importa cualquier idioma que habla. No importa, yo quiero éxito.
His ultimate goal is to make sure that all students, you know, reach their academic success. And no matter what the goal is, you know, that's his priority.
So part of this is that, you know, I wanted to make sure, in addition to speaking Spanish, Tim, you know, also exhibited great leadership skills in his current position. You know, we had three great candidates, but I really wanted the public and particularly the ELL community to know that. And it's important that we hire and support individuals that represent our community, but also our language. So I appreciate it tremendously, Yanni, for, you could stop translating for Tim because Tim can speak English, but we just thought it would be, we kind of did a little bit of role reversal. But, you know, again, I was very impressed with all three candidates, and it was a very difficult decision. So if you have any other questions, Yanni, Tim, you don't have to speak Spanish anymore. Yanni, you could just hang tight, but Tim can answer in English too.
Okay. Thank you so much. Ms. Zeeem?
I was just wondering what portion of our population have the Spanish language as their primary language? Maybe that's better for Dr. Mosley?
Oh.
Or even at the high school, how many of the kids? I can't imagine if it wasn't your native tongue. So certainly, your skills will be treasured, I'm sure.
Thank you. Ms. Zeeem, I can only, we're just spoken in the city of Nashua. I'm not sure what portion is other languages. Yanni, would you know? I can get that information.
I know we have over 1,250 ELL students. And the main majority are Spanish-speaking. And now we have Portuguese community growing as well. So I believe that Mr. Schmidt would be a great asset.
Thank you, Ms. Zeeem. I appreciate that.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. I saw Ms. Johnson and then Ms. Timmons.
Thank you. I guess my question is for Dr. Mosley. I guess with all these new hires that we're doing with the system principals, if the schools are not opening, if we do not open completely and we do remote, how is all these hires going to play into it with nobody in the schools?
These aren't all, they're replacing people who have left the district. And so in this case, Peter, Mr. Schmidt would be supervising kids, whether it's through the hybrid version or online. The responsibilities of the Assistant Principal haven't diminished as a result of this. In fact, they actually have increased to some degree because they're now responsible for interacting and engaging kids, in this case, whether it's online or in a hybrid version. So we still need our Assistant Principals to be part of our school system. Even at our middle, even at our elementary school level, we are still having our kids. The plan is to have a deliberate, you know, I don't want to get too much in it into the weeds because this isn't the purpose of this meeting, but certainly to be deliberate and having our students return under the hybrid model in a systematic and deliberate manner. So we still need them. There's no additional, there's no additional people being added to Assistant Principals. I'm sorry, a principal left our building, our school district. John Forrest was appointed the Principalship. His position opened up, and that's why we have Tim. And an Assistant Principal at the high school secured a Principalship. And now Peter is going to be taking her position.
Thank you, because many people are asking in the community about the different types of schooling that's going to happen. And I'm just, if anybody's watching, I want them to understand that hopefully that kids that are remoting, that our Assistant Principals are also going out and checking to find out when they're not on the remote, why aren't they? Or if the Chromebooks are broken, how can they be being taught if they're not online? So I just want to make sure that all of this is tagging in, that this is going to be the purpose, because people are not happy out there right now. Thank you very much.
All right, I couldn't get it off the mute. Ms. Timmons and then Ms. Brown, did anyone else have their hands up that I'm missing? I don't see anybody else, so go ahead, Ms. Timmons.
Okay, Mr. Schmidt, I was on your interview, and you really surprised me because I didn't know you spoke Spanish. Any other languages that you can speak other than Spanish?
I speak a little bit of French and even less German. So just a little bit.
Danke.
Yeah, bitte, bitte. I love languages, so I'm always, you know, as I said earlier, I'm always learning. And, you know, that's how I expand my horizons, by traveling and learning languages. So I think that's very important, and that plays right in with the cultural diversity that we find in Nashua. I think that's awesome. It really goes hand in hand.
And you did mention that you wanted to get into more diverse school, I guess. Here you are. We're welcome.
Yep, exactly. And I'm very, very, very happy to be here.
Danke.
Thank you, Ms. Timmons. Ms. Brown?
Yes, I saw on your resume that you were the Global Studies Coordinator at Pinkerton. I would love to hear about that and if there's any part of that program that you think you could facilitate here in Nashua.
Sure. So we were sort of in the beginning stages over at Pinkerton with the Global Studies program. I would say there's three pieces to that. There was the international student piece, in which we were trying to build an actual international student population of what we call J1 and F1 visa students that would come to our school and would attend classes and matriculate, hopefully for four years. So there were more the permanent students that would stay for the four years. And then there were the annual students through the J1 visa exchange program that would come as sort of exchange students. So that was one part of my piece, of my job, a very big piece of that, was writing the program for that. Another piece to my job was what I would call the outgoing global programming, which was any students and any programs that we had that were interacting with other countries. So we had a Spanish exchange program, a German exchange program, bringing our kids out, trips to different parts of the world, bringing our kids out to see the world, to use their language skills, to learn about other people, to learn about themselves, and to really connect that global citizenship that we really wanted to try to build. The last part of all of this was sort of the domestic piece, and that was bringing globalized content to our teaching, to our programs, to our classrooms, bringing in, you know, guest speakers to the school, bringing the world to the school, and also bringing the school to the world. So kind of a new type of approach to education. I have a little bit of background in global ed, which you can see from the resume there. And this just fits right into it. It's bringing, you know, making kids understand that they are global citizens and that they are part of the world. And what a fascinating place that we live in, you know? So it's that connection piece that's big.
Thank you so much. Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Schmidt? No? All right, well, Ben, Ben Dino? And we're happy to have you.
Thank you.
Oh, Ms. Timmons?
Yes, I moved to nominate Peter Schmidt, Assistant Principal of Nashua High School North for the 2021 school year at an annual salary of $83,000.
I second.
Okay, the motion was by Ms. Timmons, seconded by Ms. Gilio. Mr. Guarino, when you're ready?
Okay. On the motion, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Mrs. Johnson? Ms. Zeeem?
Yes, absolutely.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
I'll be the same.
All right, wonderful. So the next item on our agenda is the other personnel recommendations. Ms. Timmons or Ms. O'Gara, is there anything that we need to know on that? Or is it simply a motion?
Simply a motion.
All right. Laura's yours, Ms. Timmons. And then.
I move to approve the personnel recommendation dated July 27, 2020.
Second.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Brown had a question?
Thank you, Madam President. So in regards to this, on the list are the, an entire year of sports positions. And I know we ran into the issue in the springtime, whether we should pay them, because I think they're paid in stipends. I don't know, quarterly? Is that correct? I'm not sure. I can't remember that, Ms. O'Gara. They're quarterly. I'm wondering if those positions should be held off until after we decide what we're doing for athletics for the school year so that we don't end up having to renegotiate someone's pay partway through or something like that?
Well, Dan, they're paid in three, three times in the year, right? The coaches?
The coaches are paid after they finish the season. So the fall coaches are paid in, let's say, November, the winter coaches in February, the spring in May or June, yes.
And I think that our athletic directors wanted them to go through past that. I can't really answer the rest of your question.
They're already starting their coaching already. I can't speak for all of the athletic events, but they've already started working in a safe way. Lisa outlined that probably about two or three weeks ago when she came and presented to the board. I can speak, again, for field hockey and football. I can't speak for others, but I'm sure they're doing it. It's strength and conditioning with the kids. They're practicing social distancing. They're doing, you know, some basic skills that are conducive to their particular sport if and if they are going to move forward. It's my understanding that the New Hampshire scholastic, I would say, organization, they're actually following the lead of what Massachusetts did. Massachusetts actually said something to the effect, don't quote me, they're going to hold off and delay, delaying the official start of fall until September 15. However, the kids are still preparing, and the coaches are still preparing to do so. Certainly, you know, they're, even if the board show will, maybe prorated, or I don't know. But I need fall sports off the table yet or not pay them because there's so many options that Lisa was looking at. For example, it might be doing something intercity, where it's just our kids or doing with small groups of different communities. So she's been kicking around a whole bunch of options for our kids to engage in extracurricular activities. I would advise that if you wanted to just see how it all plays out, I would certainly advise the board with that. But these coaches have been working with the kids actually since July, if not earlier. Football starts actually, I think, in like late June. So, you know, I don't know what else to say.
I would like to say that we don't want to take the chance of losing them either. I'd rather have them on the hook than not have them on the hook. So I think we should go along and approve this personnel recommendation because I think it's fair, and I think we should be prepared because we really don't know if we're going back to school or not in the fall. But I'd rather have them on the hook than not on the hook. I wouldn't take chances on if this is going to happen. So I'd rather have a fish in hand. That's my opinion. That's why I nominated for approval on that, and it was second.
Okay. Mr. Norris has his hand up? Oh, and then Ms. Johnson?
So I've actually, we've been doing conditioning and agility with the soccer team for the last month or so, or whatever. So we maintain social distancing. We run, we do ladders, we do everything where we still stay six feet apart. But I think the coaches are actually working harder than we usually would be now. Before, they could just throw us into a scrimmage and watch us play. But now they have to take our temperatures, they have to ask all the questions. They only can have nine people in a group, and then you only can have two groups. So they're actually working way harder than I'd say that we usually were at this time of the season. So I don't know where we got prorated from, but I know we want to try to have some sort of athletic season, and I think it'd be a shame if somebody were to leave if we weren't to pay them.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. So this list, is this for the whole season? Is that what we're seeing, the whole season list? Okay. Because I, if this school got shut down again, I don't want to have to start paying people again that aren't doing anything. I mean, the last time it was just because, you know, we did it because it was an unfortunate thing. But I'd rather go piece by piece already that fall, and then we see what happens in fall, getting to the winter. And so we're taking the athlete's temperature, and we're asking them questions if they've been around with anybody who's with COVID-19? That's what I'm understanding? So we've got parents' approval with this?
Yes, if I can answer. We had to, you had to sign up for the season and sign up for summer workouts, and that involves signing a liability form or whatever. And then they ask you if you've been on public transportation outside of New Hampshire, Vermont, Maine, if you have had a cough, if you had a sore throat, if you've been in contact with anybody with COVID. And then they take your temperature. And that goes on before anybody can practice.
Okay. And I guess my question then becomes, where does this information go to? We have to retake this, all this information with the liability. Does it go into the student files? Or does the health department get all this information? Who compiles all this information? Does anybody have an answer?
I can get Lisa, I mean, I, what, go ahead, Jennifer. Ms. Bishop had an response?
It's, in the moment, it's not checked anywhere. Julie just went today, and they should ask the question if they've written anything down.
Anthony.
They wrote it down? Oh, hold on.
I can't hear you, Jennifer.
And they inaccurate it. And me.
Ms. Bishop, you're kind of cutting.
Sorry. I flipped over electronics.
Okay. So we'll wait till you're able to call in and.
I guess it.
And get a better signal. But it sounds like she was saying that her daughter started sports, and they took it, they took her temperature and wrote it down, but we don't know where it went after that. and they took it, they took her temperature and wrote it down, but we don't know where it went after that. So, hopefully Ms. Bishop can connect in a way that we can hear her soon. Okay, um, I, I don't hear any other motions or, or, um, anything else. So, um, if no one else has anything to say on this, I think we're ready for the roll call. I see nothing, so, uh, Mr. Guarino?
Okay, on the motion, um, to approve the personnel, um, recommendations, July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, uh, Mr. Guarino votes yes, Mrs. Johnson?
No.
Uh, Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
I abstain to, um, make sure I don't have a conflict of interest.
Okay, Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Seven yeses, one abstention, one no, the motion carries.
Okay, well, welcome to everybody new on that list. Um, great, so, um, is that it for personnel recommendations this evening? Ms. O'Gara?
Absolutely.
Okay, Dr. Mosley, can you give us an update, um, next week about the, um, question of where the kids' temperatures and answers to those questions are being documented and stored? Okay, Dr. Mosley said yes with his face, but I didn't hear him, so, there's some nodding going on. Okay, um, so, oh, go ahead, Doc. Okay, now I'm getting the thumbs up. All right, so, um, I think that takes care of items one and two on our, um, agenda. And so, um, the next item I have, um, is a non-public session, um, under, let's see, I'd be looking for a motion to go into non-public, um, under RSA A three-two, um, negotiations. I guess that's E.
So moved.
Okay, does anyone want to second it?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Timmons? Okay, um, and so, Mr. Guarino, when you're ready?
Okay, on the motion to go into non-public, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Um, Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes, yes, yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Oh, I know.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons? Motion carries nine to zero.
All right, great, so we are going into non-public at six twelve PM. Thank you so much, Mr. Norris and Mr. Gao. I don't believe we will be, um, having another public session with a vote from here on out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
I would entertain a motion to come out of non-public.
So moved.
Okay, moved by everyone. Ray, I don't know how you want to take that down. We'll give it to Ms. Gilio. And we'll give a second to, I don't know who else talked, Ms. Zim.
All right.
Ray, are you?
I'm here. On the motion to come out of non-public, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. We are out of non-public at eight fourteen PM.
Excellent, thank you. Um, I would entertain a motion.
It's, it's the agreement between the National Board of Education and the National Association of School Administrators and Supervisors.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the contract as Ms. O'Gara just referenced?
So moved, okay.
Oh, wow, that was a lot of people. I heard Jen and Mrs. Bishop and Ms. Timmons first. But there were a lot of voices there.
Okay.
That's a good sign. All right, any discussion on the motion? Ms. Johnson?
I'm just gonna be very brief, I'm not gonna support this, because there's still too many people in the community that are out of work and I can't justify it. I know we negotiated a good rate, um, I'm glad I was able to do it, but you know what? I just, I'm thinking about the community, about whether or not the taxes are gonna come in to pay everybody. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any other comments? No, seeing none, uh, Mr. Guarino?
On the motion, uh, to approve the contract, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Mrs. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to one, eight yeses, one no.
All right, thank you, everybody, and thank you, everybody, um, from that negotiating team. I'm sorry?
Did we seal the minutes? I'm losing it, did we seal them? We did? I see it shaking. I'll be all right, I'm on the next planet now, good night. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, motion to adjourn by Ms., Dr. Mosley?
I'm sorry, so.
Okay, sorry, so many people were talking and there's background noise in my house, so I was, I lost it all. I think it was Ms. Timmons who motioned to adjourn and Ms. Johnson who seconded it.
Yep.
Okay. On the, on the motion to adjourn, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero, we are adjourned at eight eighteen PM.